Six twenty-nine, we have returned from closed session. I'll ask if the city attorney would please report out of closed session.
Recording in progress.
The time is six twenty-nine, we're back from closed session. I would like to ask if the city attorney would please report out.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there was no reportable action taken in closed session.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, the time is six twenty-nine and I adjourn this meeting. The time is six twenty-nine, Madam Clerk. I call to order the special study session of the City Council of the City of Emeryville. Please note, Madam Clerk, that all members remain present. This time, I'll take a motion to approve the final agenda for this meeting.
I move approval of the agenda.
A motion by Vice Mayor Welch, second by Member Corr to approve the agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Corr?
Aye.
Councilmember Mora?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye, thank you. Ex parte communications, members, are there any members who wish to report on ex parte communication for the study session?
No.
No, okay, seeing none, now is the time for a public comment for items not on the agenda. A member of the public who wishes to comment for an item not on the agenda for today's study session has two minutes to do so. I see no hands raised. Madam Clerk, do we receive any written comments?
No, Mayor, we did not.
Okay, public comment for non-agenda items is complete. We'll move now to the study session, which is the capital improvement program for the 2023 to 2028 process, an update and check-in, which will be done by the Public Works staff. Good evening. Hi, Josie.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Josie Arons and I'm a management analyst in Public Works. This is my first time meeting some of you in person. It's great to see you. Let's see, I will pull up our presentation. All right, so some of this information will be familiar to you. For some, it may be very new, and that's okay, and we'll have time for questions and comments at the end. But like Mayor Bowders shared, this is just a time to check in about the process and where we are and the next steps between now and the end of the fiscal year. So the capital improvement program is a five-year plan that helps guide Emeryville's investment in our public buildings, parks, streets, sewers, and other facilities. And basically, as city staff, we use this as a roadmap to guide our work, to do all the things that we need to do to design, construct, and repair city facilities that support a livable and sustainable Emeryville. So here is our timeline. We began this process in October of last year with a study session at council. In November, Public Works staff facilitated conversations with different city staff across departments to hear their needs and concerns and ideas about the capital improvement program. In December, we did some public outreach over social media and with flyers to get initial input from community members. Oh, I'm sorry, that public outreach was to alert community members that in January was the time to give public input. In January, I visited three council committees and six public advisory committees to gather input on the plan. February, we released our public feedback survey, and here we are in March. And the feedback survey on priorities will go until the end of March. In April, we'll be spending many hours together with our staff and the Finance Department, putting together our budget, seeing what our constraints are and opportunities with other funding. May, we'll be busy again, visiting the Budget Committee, having another City Council session, and then taking the plan to the Planning Commission, which is required for them to verify that the plan is in compliance with our general plan. And then in June, we will hopefully adopt the capital improvement program along with the city's operating budget for the next two years. And just a little bit more information about the foundation of the plan, these blue squares at the bottom, these are our foundational pieces. So the city has many plans and resources and guiding documents, these are our source documents, and they sort of tell us what our priorities are as a city. And so we're not starting from square one. The capital improvement program is basically pulling these different priorities and goals from these other documents and filtering that into one plan. We also have values that are a foundational piece of our capital improvement program, and these will be used to tag projects, and you'll be able to see which projects are in alignment with different values. And then we also have updated categories. The last CIP had eleven categories, this one has six, as a way to both simplify the categories to make them more legible to the public and also elevate some projects, like we have a new urban greening category, and that one is to make sure that we're giving attention to our parks and street trees. So we take all of those foundational pieces, along with city staff, council, and public input, to get a draft list of projects. And that draft list began with the eighty-five projects that were in our last CIP, and that draft list has been published in our prioritization survey. And then basically, how we get to that final project list is by looking at our budget constraints and then coming back to you all for the final decision about what your priorities are and what you want to make sure is definitely in the plan. And so with that, I'll end and look forward to hearing questions and comments. Thank you.
Thank you. So now is the time for public comment. As was mentioned in the slide presentation, we're in the middle part of this process. I really want to thank you for all the work you're doing, listening to all the resident committees and all the community feedback. The survey is open through when?
The end of March.
The end of March. So residents who wish to complete the survey can find that on the website. It's also been pushed out through our flash notice, and we are going to have a more in-depth discussion about this in the upcoming months, in May and June. But if you're a member of the public and would like to comment at this time on the process, where it's at, you're welcome to come and do that for two minutes. Are there any members present today who wish to do that? Seeing none, do we have any public comments submitted for this item?
No, Mayor, we did not.
Okay, thank you. Public comment is closed. Members, if you have questions for staff about the process at this point, you can raise your hand. Anyone have questions or comments? Vice Mayor Welch?
Hi, Josie. I noticed on the survey, there's an option for residents taking the survey to put any other comments. How are you taking those into consideration?
Yeah, so far, some of the comments have been about how the survey is structured and asking for more clarity on the mandatory and active projects list. So we've responded by labeling each project, so it is more clear. Some other feedback is about general priorities, wanting more parks. Someone was very excited about the Art Center being in the next-door parcel, so things like that, which are already going to be reflected in the plan. In terms of things that are additional comments that may not be able to be in the plan, we are going to include something at the end of the CIP that includes information about this is what we heard and things that we were unable to prioritize or fund. And so that's sort of how we'll respond to some of the things that come up in the survey that aren't already going to be addressed in projects.
Thank you very much.
Others with questions or comments? Member Pryforce?
So after a tour of some of the facilities that we use related to ECCL, I saw a lot of opportunities for modernization, more technology for some of these facilities. One of the concerns I've always had about our facilities in Emeryville is if VP Harris decided, hey, I'm going to skip Oakland and come to Emeryville, where do we host her? That we don't really have a convening space here at City Hall for someone of that magnitude. And when it comes to other spaces, that not only do we not have the size, but maybe through technology, we could host several people at several sites. And so the focus being on using technology to close some of those gaps that we have existing. I'd like it so that those owls would be available everywhere in Emeryville that we may not have focused on when it comes to the way that we can host folks. And so that's something that is on my mind when it comes to CIP. I have nothing concrete, and I'll probably go back and forth between you and this amazing staff. But that's definitely something that has come to mind, is that we don't really have anything like that that I know of, that we may have to go to, like, some of the hotels in Emeryville and ask them, you know, to host. And that doesn't really make a lot of sense compared to our sister cities. Thank you.
Others with comments or questions? No? Okay, well, we're in the middle of a long process, and I want to thank the community for being engaged in all the members of our advisory committees as well, and of course, above all else, our staff that are working on this. Thank you so much, Josie, and we look forward to getting the results of that survey and the other feedback from staff when the time is right.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, the time is six thirty-nine, and I've adjourned this meeting. And Madam Clerk, the time is six thirty-nine PM, and I call to order the special meeting of the City Council of the City of Emeryville. Please note for the record that all members remain present. At this time, I'll take a motion to approve the final agenda.
I move approval of the final agenda.
I second it.
Motion by Vice Mayor Welch, second by Member Corr to approve the agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Corr?
Aye.
Councilmember Mora?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Bowders?
Aye, thank you. Members, are there any ex parte communications for the action items on tonight's meeting? Seeing and hearing none, now is the time for public comment on non-agenda items. A member of the public who wishes to comment for an item not on the agenda for today's special meeting has two minutes to do so. Is there any member of the public wishing to comment for a non-agenda item? Do we receive any written comments for non-agenda items?
We did not, Mayor.
Okay, public comment is now closed. We'll turn to action items. We have three tonight. The first is six point one, which is the Budget Advisory Committee's annual report on committee goals, principles, and accomplishments for calendar year 2022 and the proposed priorities for calendar year 2023. And I would like to welcome the Budget Advisory Committee. Don't be afraid, just come on up, Kirsten.
So this is my first time, so I'm a little nervous.
We're gentle, don't worry.
I don't know how to do the presentation, so I guess I have the hard copy, but I know that's not what they say, so. And then I just... On that, yeah, okay. Okay, thank you very much. Hi there, I'm Kirsten Warraven, I'm the representative of the Budget Advisory Committee.
Can you do me one favor? Pull that mic down to you so the people at home can hear you. Perfect.
Is that better?
Yep, that's great.
Okay. So the start of 2023, we've already had a few updates to the Budget Advisory Committee. I am the new chair for the committee, and we have two new members, David Kritzberg and Navar Oaks. We're very excited to have them as members, and it's already been great participation so far, so it's been great. So I will go over very quickly with you the 2022 financial items that were reviewed by the committee, and also go over the 2023 goals for the committee. All right, so 2022, the financial reports that we reviewed were the Pension Trust Quarterly Investment Reports in General and the Investment Portfolio, the Fiscal Year '21 and '22 Midyear Budget Amendments and Annual Financial Report, the Fiscal Year '22 and '23 Operational Budget, which included some long-term financial projections, as well as the quarterly financial reports for the financial, I mean, the fire services expenditures. For 2023, we have primary focuses and secondary focuses, so the primary focuses will review, monitor, and provide feedback on the following items. So city revenues, expenditures, and the reserve funds. We obviously want to make sure that we have a second set of eyes for just trying to make sure we're being sound in the decision-making and what have you. Reserve balances, to make sure that the city continues to be as fiscally responsible as it has in the past. We wanted to brainstorm around potential new sources of revenue and funding sources. I know that's a big one and hard, but figured brainstorming is always helpful. You never know what you're going to get out of that. And continue to review the city's unfunded liabilities, again, just trying to make sure that the city continues to remain financially viable. And then the secondary priorities to review and provide feedback on is the midyear budget and amendments, the new fiscal cycle proposed budget, the master fee schedule and capital improvement plan. We added the capital improvement plan this cycle based on feedback from the committee. I thought that was great, and we're trying to get it looped into the timing cycle that you guys already just outlined just a few moments ago. The affordable housing, general obligation bonds financing, we actually have already started those conversations. Budget financial policies in general, just seeing if there's anything else that we need that needs to be feedback loop on that. And then lastly, the investment policy pension and other, again, post-employment benefit liabilities, because that can be a big one, and we need to plan for that. And that's it.
You were so worried, it was your first time, you did great. So before we take questions and comments, are there any members from the public that wish to comment on the work plan and the goals and achievements of the Budget Advisory Committee from '22 or into '23? Do we receive any written comments for item six point one?
No, Mayor.
Okay, public comment is closed. We'll turn to members for discussion or questions. I just want to say, as the liaison for the last six years to the Budget Advisory Committee, I know we don't have liaisons anymore, but, yeah, those were ended at the end of last year.
Okay.
But it, the best little committee in the world is the Budget Advisory Committee, and you do a lion's share of the work on really keeping on top of all that we do on the fiscal side of things. And as a member of the Budget Governance Committee, I really appreciate the insight that you and the other members provide. I think it'll be of particular interest to see your recommendations on funding around the capital improvement program. There's a lot of interest. We do that only every five years, so how resources are available and within that space and how we could best use the money to leverage great capital projects. I just want to advise and recommend that you take that back to the committee as a really great recommendation for how to help steer the next round of investments we make in the city's infrastructure and community. So thank you for that. And are there any other members who wish to give comment? Thank you so much for coming out this evening, Ms. Warraven.
Thank you. Appreciate the friendly faces.
Take care.
Have a good evening.
Okay, item six point two is the Commission on Aging's annual report on committee goals, principles, and accomplishments from calendar year 2022 and a proposed committee priorities for calendar year 2023. Hi, John. Welcome.
Thank you. See if I can do this now. There it is.
That was the, that's the last slide, though, it looks like, the last.
Yeah, so now go to the next one.
Oh, look at that.
Here we go.
Awesome job.
Well, I'm John Suter, I'm the Chair of the Commission on Aging, and I'd like to give this report. Mayor Bowders, Vice Mayor Welch, and members, new, all new. We, I have great satisfaction in providing this presentation to show you the meaningful actions we took and the plans we have for 2023. Let's see, here we have our mission statement. The City of Emeryville's Commission on Aging is dedicated to promoting a dignified, healthful quality of life for older adults by advocating for vital services, providing opportunities to develop a meaningful fellowship, offering lifelong learning activities, and being an accessible community resource. This is the foundation that we at the COA use for topics of our discussion and our Our accomplishments, the first one that we're most proud of is the Commission on Aging Action Plan, excuse me, the Age Friendly Action Plan. It was approved by the City Council November '22. It was a five-year project, and frankly, in my four years on the COA, I've seen this grow from little more than an outline of demographics to into something that is a wonderful promotion of Emeryville for seniors. It's posted on the Emeryville website. If you've seen it, wonderful. If you haven't, I can help you. The second item was the COA recommended approval for an RFP to Alameda Area Agency on Aging. This is to provide funding for the Senior Center. Maybe you realize it, maybe you don't, but the Senior Center is an Emeryville treasure. The return on investment for these kinds of grants is phenomenal. Pre-COVID, seniors from all over the East Bay flocked to Salem Street to enjoy all the services that were available there. And it's gradually returning back to that level, and we're really enjoying it with the good support and management by Kim Burrows. The third item is the COA's extensive recommendation to the City Council for website improvements for senior resources. This was an unexpected consequence of our age-friendly project, the discovery that the Emeryville website needed a lot of adjustment and some polish. And so we were pleased when the council received that so well, and I've already seen some of the improvements already on the website. The fourth item, the continued discussion on ideas for recruitment, this is something that's been going on for a while, and it's more than just merely maintaining a quorum. I'll talk about that later, because it'll come up for our actions, too. I mean, our plans. The COA sent a letter of support to the City Council for the city's paid parking program. Our accomplishments...
One more slide, John.
That's right, that's right, one more. There we go, wrong button. So our priorities are to increase awareness of the City of Emeryville's appointed committees and commission priorities that directly relate to the aging population in the purview of the Commission on Aging. We find that in order to really do our job, we need to be aware of discussions and actions taken so that we can then have our own discussions to make sure everything aligns up with our feelings of importance for our cohort. The second is the continued recruitment of members to reflect the demographic population of the city. The COA's age cohort, excuse me, has given us members who are veterans of life. However, it hasn't spread its benefit to social diversity, and our targets now include disability, which encompasses physical, emotional, financial, and residential. We discovered these areas need representation during our program for the age-friendly community. So it's something that we really are looking at. We're stimulating citizen involvement as part of our recruitment, those people that don't really want to apply, we stimulate them to at least attend our meetings online through Zoom and encourage them to participate. And finally, to improve the safety and security for seniors in all ages of physical ability. And I think that speaks for itself. That's my report. Thank you.
John, are there any members of the public who wish to comment on item six point two related to the report from the Commission on Aging? And did we receive any written comment cards, April?
No, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Public comment is closed. We'll turn to members for discussion or comments. Member Pryforce?
So thank you for your presentation and how you mastered that PowerPoint slide. I appreciate that. So a big thing, actually, I just learned today from my city manager that for the capital improvement plan, that my emphasis on ADA compliance and getting many of our buildings, whether they were built before ADA compliances or certain rules or procedures as relates to that, I'm getting a lot of reports from people who are simply saying, I can't open my doors, or I'm getting hurt opening my doors. And so that's something that I will probably re-mention again during a future agenda items, but is that something that the Commission has also, in terms of received, in terms that we are aging as a city and that our buildings may not be keeping up with our aging population? And then the other thing that pops up also was Eugene Sway during a council meeting mentioned mental health integration into, I guess, our life in a way that de-stigmatizes, because if we integrate it well, then we would de-stigmatize mental health services. And Councilmember Welch also spoke to when he mentioned that. So those are the two things, is, has that come across in terms of the Commission and you fine folk, as relates to our buildings? And, yeah, our buildings and people who are complaining, having issues with our buildings, because you didn't mention disability as well, and also mental health, and what more that we can do, I guess, as a city to support residents when it comes to those two things? Yes.
Several areas. The first one, during the studies on the age-friendly community, as well as later when we made recommendations for improving the website, a lot of it had to do with providing resources, which in many times just amounts to links to those resources for individuals to upgrade their homes where they had difficulty in accessing. And so we were much more focused on the individuals' buildings. We haven't yet looked at public, or let's see, at the city buildings. That's something we can add to our discussion items and can review. As far as the mental health, I refer to that as emotional health, because it's, I use all abstracts, because it covered a multitude of opportunities for us. And we definitely see dementia as something that has had very little recognition, or let's say, focus, or even attention on looking at options. And so that's something in particular we are hoping to add to our discussions, to make recommendations to you.
Others? Councilmember Corr?
Thank you, John. It's nice to meet you. I've heard about you from Kim Burrows, and I've visited the Senior Center, and it's a nice place. I can't wait to be fifty and join the Senior Center, because I was surprised that the age threshold is so low. But I'm glad you have so many amenities, and I think that, of course, I wish you good luck in going in the 2023 goals and priorities. I'm sure you will continue to do great services for the seniors in our city. I was wondering if there is something like a family support commission also that we could work towards, attracting families to the city with those similar kind of items that you have in your services as a senior center, like a family center, something like that? like that? Is that something that we, as a city, could come up with?
We probably could. There are already a lot of options available. Once again, it was what we discovered in our long five-year project and made recommendations and pointed out different additions to the website so that we can make these easily found by residents of the city. But there are a lot of resources within the city already. However, some of them have to do with that issue that I mentioned about emotional, and that is, a lot of seniors suffer from loneliness as they, especially during COVID, it was through the roof. We lost social interaction. And so, we have a lot of resources for that and a lot of need for that. I try to encourage people because Mayor Bowers may realize I'm on a mission to attract those with disabilities to join commissions and committees for future use, but in that, they will provide additional guidance as to priorities. The important aspect of, or one of the concerns, one of the problems with this is the senior, when you're in 70s, 60s, 70s, and 80s, CDC calls us at risk. And a lot of people take that to heart, and they want to manage their own health, and they're afraid of leaving their homes. And so, it exacerbates their social, let's say, they're hibernating, and it's not good for their social health. And so, these are all things we need to work on as a community, whether we're aged like me or young as you are. All encouragement to help people deal with these kinds of stresses will be helpful in, I would say, relieving them, helping them manage their own feelings of abandonment, put it that way, by society.
Thank you, John. We are not getting any, none of us are getting any younger. We'll all get there, so.
Yeah, matter of fact, you're five minutes older. Yes.
Exactly. So, I'm glad we have something like this in this city and glad to hear that people from all the other neighboring cities also flock here. So, that's good to know. Thank you.
Okay, Member Pryforce, go ahead.
Is there anything that our neighbors are doing that you would like for us to adopt or take a look at, like Berkeley or Oakland or Alameda?
Good question. In doing research for the age-friendly, I spread my search throughout the state of California and frankly, found that some of the best cities that had programs going, we identified as basically being Fremont, Berkeley, and over in on the peninsula. And they had, they gave a lot of ideas, gave us a lot of ideas to create our form, our organization, if you must, for the design for the age-friendly program. I can't say that they've accomplished it. They sound like they may be closer to it, but I would have to go there and experience it. And I have to admit, I have not gone to really query them and see just how far they've progressed. But that definitely now is an item on my list. I'll get off my computer and start traveling.
I might go with you.
Well, John, I have a couple of comments, too. So, first of all, it's always nice to see you. You didn't say this today, but I want to share for those who are new and don't know your role with PAPCO. You know, you wear several hats for us, and I appreciate how much time you give to the community, not just for the Commission on Aging, but for also people with mobility issues in the paratransit and pedestrian communities who are trying to navigate life. As you noted, social isolation is partly due to stigmatization and other things that we do that encourage or sometimes indirectly result in people locking themselves in for safety reasons, health reasons, other things. But part of it is also that the built environment doesn't accommodate people's independence also. So, a big priority for the community has been in the role at AC, the Alameda County Transportation Commission, has been the Eight to Go program, right? Which I know that the Senior Center really supports and the Emery Go Round and other services that help keep the seniors in this community independent. And you are absolutely 100% right. One of the crown jewels of this community that few people really recognize or know is the Senior Center, and it's a testament to the community services staff. I want to recognize Rebecca, but in particular, Kim Burrows, for all the work you have done over these years at the Senior Center. Honestly, it is a secret, and Pedro, Pedro in a prior hat as well, the team in community services, you really do offer an array of programming that is unparalleled in relation to the other programs in the Northern Alameda County region. And people do come from all over. I get emails from people in San Leandro and Hayward who come all the way up here for programs on certain days of the week. So, I just want to say, I really appreciate the role that you guys have, and I appreciate that that remains a priority on your list to bring people back post-COVID, as people did change habits and for different reasons, right? So, I want to really thank you for that. I think you provided us an excellent report, and I've just always appreciated the way you come from a learning attitude to things and an openness to exploring new ideas and being willing to learn. It's something I deeply admire about you. So, thank you so much for your continued service to this committee. I appreciate it.
Well, thank you, Mayor.
You're very welcome. Are there any further comments or questions for Mr. Suter? No, thank you so much for your report, and have a lovely evening. Okay, item 6.3 is the Economic Development Advisory Committee's annual report on committee goals, principles, and accomplishments for calendar year 2022 and the proposed priorities for 2023. And I'd like to welcome Mary Lou Thierkopf. Hi, Mary Lou.
And I already took a look at this, and I can't really see because of my contacts and the light, so Amber's going to take care of it for me. Good evening, Mayor Bowers, Vice Mayor Welch, and council members. I'm Mary Lou Thierkopf, owner of Working Images Public Relations and a partner in San Francisco on the Bay, which actually started as Emeryville on the Bay for the 34th Americas Cup Destination Emeryville Program. That was my first project on the EDAC. And now, I'm the chair of the EDAC. I've been for a few years. And I'm deeply involved in making sure that Emeryville has a very strong, positive image out there in the world. And I'm also passionate about advocating for our business community and providing our BizNexus networking events. So, this evening, I'm going to tell you a little bit about the role of the EDAC and review our accomplishments for 2022, and then present to you our 2023 goals. Next. Okay, so, the EDAC role is to provide input and recommendations regarding city policies and priorities as far as they relate to economic strategies and priorities. Next. So, our accomplishments for 2022. Our first priority was to finalize the plan for our marketing program. We had established an ad hoc marketing committee who met in between our bi-monthly meetings. And our economic development strategy is to enhance Emeryville's economic status, leveraging the city's competitive advantage of art, we are a city of art and innovation, and this really distinguishes us. This strategy guided the development of the marketing tools that we need, and we, at the same time, focused on staff's analysis and budgetary constraints and legal constraints and the best practices by other cities around us. And in 2022, we completed our marketing program plan and created the outline and scope of project. So, we also continued our business roundtable discussions. We had previously engaged the cannabis industry and the hotel industry, and that was during the pandemic. And then, in 2022, we initiated a successful roundtable with the restaurant businesses. And I couldn't believe it, that people would leave the restaurant at noon and come over here and sit down and talk with us, well, it was on Zoom, but they took the time to talk with us about what happened during the pandemic and what their concerns were going forward. And they were very thankful for the city's response to the pandemic and helping with outdoor dining and all the intricacies that went into making that happen. So, that was really positive. We also had a roundtable with the marina businesses where they shared what was going on, updated us on the marina, the fish count, the, and then we started exploring some ideas for the future of the Marina Park, which was really fun. We find that we can really keep tabs on the pulse of the business community with these roundtable discussions, and they're just so honest. People are right there and really want to share. And then, BizNexus is our third accomplishment. We, after two and a half years of being on hold during the pandemic, in June of '22, EDAC relaunched the new season of networking with our first BizNexus event on the Emeryville Greenway at Cafe Rack. We focused on the cannabis and sustainable cannabis industry and sustainability with a theme of going green, serving up appetizers and Emeryville's own wondrous brewing beer. We finally got to connect with our community again, and it was just wonderful. It was a beginning, and there was hope. It was exciting. We held our autumn event at Honor Kitchen and Cocktails before the remodel of their outdoor area and celebrated the creative community and the installation of the thought-provoking seawalls murals provided by the city and the Pansia Seed Foundation. We noticed at that event that our attendance had increased from the previous one. And then, by the time we hosted Marriott the Market, our December event at Market, Public Market Emeryville, the attendance was at pre-pandemic numbers. You could really feel the energy and camaraderie that night. Folks walked up to me and said, "Oh, we've got to do this every month. This is so important, so helpful." So, that strong attendance and the comments from everyone signals our commitment to future events. Okay, so, next. Other accomplishments included the discussion of the right to recall ordinance, and this is that ordinance where the hotel and card room workers who were laid off during COVID-19 had to be offered the possibility of returning to their old position before the covered employer could hire a new employee. So, we reviewed that and gave it our nod. We also had a discussion of the reach codes where we reviewed changes to the building code, and then we proposed revisions to the cabaret ordinance to simplify the process for the business community. And what I love about the EDAC group is that each member brings their own perspective to the table. They're very thoughtful, and they truly look at the issues at hand through the eyes of the residents and the businesses that are most affected by these policies. They are a very dedicated group. I'm just lucky to be part of it. And I guess at this juncture, I should thank Chad and his staff for all their efforts and direction. Okay, so, next. Now, our priorities for 2023. Our economic development strategy includes a broad list of activities under our purview. The strategy is prioritized to guide staff, EDAC, and the City Council on where to prioritize and allocate funds. Our top priorities for 2023 still reflect the current economic context. So, our first priority is to implement the marketing program. In 2021, we performed research, conducted outreach and surveys, and did our planning for this program. And in 2022, with further outreach and analysis, we wrote the outline and scope of project. And we are now currently developing the RFP for consultant support, and it'll go to EDAC's committee meeting for review, and then we'll go through the RFP process to find a consultant and then get it going. We hope to paint the real story of this little city of Emeryville and advance its image through the lens of art and innovation, unveiling the hidden gems that make us unique. Emeryville's going to shine. You'll see it in our new website and social platforms, in words, images, video, graphics, and in the news via traditional and online media, and in our digital newsletter that we hope to produce. Okay, and our second priority for 2023 is the Solutions Grant Program. Currently, the city's business incentives are limited. However, there is a need to provide financial support in the reuse of commercial buildings that would strengthen our city's economy. Many buildings require significant investment to comply with fire protection, accessibility, seismic safety standards, et cetera, the development impact fees, and so on. And many of the desirable businesses and nonprofits just don't have the capital, and they can't locate here. They have to locate somewhere else. This year, the EDAC will continue to prioritize the development of a program to provide assistance in the form of a solutions grant to help facilitate the location of beneficial operations in Emeryville. We want to bring certain businesses here. When they come to us, we want to help them. And that includes causes that really resonate with us and our goals. So, other goals, other priorities are the continuance of industry-focused roundtables, so we keep up with what's going on in our business community, support of the BizNexus networking events, and of course, support of affordable housing, and as always, we'll be monitoring the city's labor standards. The EDAC is an engaged, dedicated, and productive advisory body, and we are continuing with this spirit in 2023. Our economic development strategy will guide us in our work efforts to support the local economy of Emeryville. Thank you. Any comments?
Thank you. First, we'll call for public comment. Members of the public who wish to comment on item 6.3 for the special council meeting have two minutes. Is there any member present who wishes to comment? I see we have one hand raised online. Could we please recognize Brian Donahue for two minutes? Good evening.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you now. Go ahead.
The speaker was talking about, I guess, the thrust of the conversation is that the city council doesn't pay enough attention to businesses, which is laughable. But she was talking about how there's unique, that Emeryville is a gem, and there are unique qualities of our city. and there are unique qualities of our city. And I agree. There are some, I don't know if I'd use the word gem, but there are...
They call senior citizens out when they comment, the comments, public comments. Yeah, he's sitting there with the... He calls senior citizens out, and they're critical of the city council. He talks about, as his comments are illegitimate. He's up on the news, he's...
I can't hear.
Covering his microphone. He gets to speak.
Can you interrupt me?
Covering his microphone.
He's a brown act. Can you reset the clock, please? Can I stop interrupting you? So we are insofar as the public...
He'll just reclaim his time.
Do I get to speak? Do I get to speak?
You're speaking.
Okay, I would like not being interrupted, please, as a brown act.
Okay, well, I will give you the courtesy of letting you know that you had your microphone covered, so nobody could hear you here. We were debating how to interrupt you. But you can go ahead.
I don't have my microphone covered.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so this previous speaker was talking about how we are unique and a gem. And I would say that we're not a gem.
I'm going to give you an extra 20 seconds. Go ahead.
But, and that we are not a gem, and that, but we are unique. And we're unique insofar as the mayor and the vice mayor don't allow for public comments to be made when they're critical of the city council. They don't, the mayor and the vice mayor don't allow comments that are critical of their public policies. And that's pretty unique in the Bay Area. So that speaker was correct when she said that we are unique.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Did we receive any written comment cards, April?
No, Mayor, we did not.
Okay, public comment is now closed. We'll turn to the members for questions or discussion. Member Mora.
Mary, thank you for the overview, and thank you so much for engaging with the business community. One question that came to mind is in your interactions with the various businesses. Did you see, were there any asks of the city? Were there any, I guess, anything that the city can do to help them continue to thrive?
Yes. We did a lot of research during the pandemic, and people really, the main thing was they want to network at events. So we were so happy to bring that back. And that's been going on for a while, people requesting that. And then they needed help during the pandemic, especially the restaurants with their businesses. And we fielded all these asks. And at all our events, we also just talk and see how people are doing and just try to give them ideas. Nothing asked, if they have to ask something of the city, they'll go through chat and come in to talk with you. But just on a one-to-one basis, we just really try to help each other that way.
Thank you.
Member Pryforce?
Hi, Mary. Thank you for your presentation. So I'm not, I'm not happy at all with the way small businesses are receiving support, are being mobilized in Emeryville. And part of it is my fault. I want to give a shout out to former council member Scott Donahue, who has invited me to speak to him. So, Mr. Donahue, if you're listening, I just want to say I apologize. And as well, I apologize to you, because I've been meaning, and the conversations that I've had with Chad, to meet with you all, to talk about... So there's this movie called Back to the Future. And in it, it's about this, like, car that can time travel. And Doc Mc, the Doc, he, you know, he explained it, and he says, "Well, this is the flux capacitor. It makes time travel possible." And EDAC, in our business community, particularly our small business community, needs a flux capacitor. So first, to go back in time and resurrect our having a chamber of commerce and what we can do to support those efforts to create a chamber of commerce. Because I'm connected to, as someone who's been in the business world, I'm connected to several chamber of commercees all across Berkeley and Oakland, the Black Chamber of Commerce, and particularly, I connect with them often. And sometimes they'll even have grants that they'll publicize to other businesses. And I don't see that same communication happening to businesses in Emeryville. And so there is a gap that's there. So after we go into the past and hopefully bring back a chamber of commerce, then we can start talking about flying cars and going to the future. And I think that this, that there's, there's not a vision there for how do we keep some of our mom-and-pop businesses in Emeryville, not just surviving, but thriving. And many of them have shared with me on the campaign trail until now. I remember, I remember one person who went into the voting booth and said that they voted for me. And then when they thought about the state of small businesses in Emeryville, because they had their own business shut down in Emeryville, they spat on the floor. And I'll never forget that. That there is, that in, you know, I've spoken to Chad, that I've gone to some of the small, I remember, we have an age-old tofu restaurant in Emeryville. I remember asking, "How long you been around?" She said, "I've been around long enough to know better. And, you know, I like to see you politicians do better by us," right? I remember the, the keysmith who talked about, well, I think they've been here for 40, 50, 60 years? Yeah, and they talked about having to find, go in and out to Oakland and other places in order to find a place where they can, that they can continue doing business. And they say, "I want to stay in Emeryville." I've gone to some of the barber shops who said, or one of the barber shops said, wanted me to say hello to council member Welch. But one of the barber shops, you know, they said, "No, I don't, I've never heard of EDAC or anything." You know, and that's what I'll do. I'll say, I'll use the word EDAC, and a lot of businesses just don't know, have never heard of EDAC. And so there is, it's unfortunate that most of the council members here are North Emeryville, right? And there's barely any South Emeryville representation, not just on the city council. But it looks like, even when I talk to some of those businesses, when it comes to being connected to some of our committees, when it comes to specifically the businesses as it relates to EDAC. And so, so I don't know whether or not the conversation that we're having or the vision that we're building includes them. But some of these mom-and-pop places, they're, they're really struggling, and they want a lot of our support. And so, and I know that, I take responsibility and accountability for that. And so, sitting down with you all and coming up with a way to engage our businesses, to get resources to them, all those things. And you know what? You know, this is a message to, that's the public. It's not just my accountability, it's also your accountability. If you want that store or that restaurant to stay open so you can Uber eat, you know, a dinner for home, they need your support too. And we all need to come together and make sure that our mom-and-pop businesses are able to stay in Emeryville and are able to thrive. And thankfully, Rudy's was able to, yeah, they would, you know, they were able to figure it out, thanks to the workers, thanks to some of the pro-worker policies that have been in place in Emeryville, thanks to folks like yourself, Mayor Batters, and council members in the past. But I don't, I don't want to Russian roulette our businesses anymore and have them count on miracles when we're here. And our taxpayer dollars should be going towards supporting them. And so, so that's the comment that I want to share. I can do more, we all can do more. And it's time we start finding that flux capacitor for our businesses.
I appreciate your comment. And I agree, the mom-and-pop businesses are the heart of Emeryville, and they were very important during the pandemic. We were in touch with as many people as we could be, just as human beings, being part of this whole awful time that we went through. And some of them that we worked really hard with did not make it. And we tried what we could. But I'm going to take your comments back to EDAC. And we have, we reach out when we're doing surveys, by email, phone, in person. And we just need to extend it further, make sure we're getting out to as many people as we can. And I was on the board of the Emeryville Chamber for seven years. So I know what you're talking about, and things are happening. Please come to our BizNexus meeting. The next one, the next event is May 22 at the Hilton Garden Inn. And they're showcasing their new remodel, and Trader Vic's is going to cater. So that'll be really fun, and I hope all of you can make it, who have not been to one yet especially. But yes, so we need to go forward with something where we've got the plan to really be able to reach out to everyone. And in the old days, we produced a newspaper here that went to every single residence and business. And, but that was a printed newspaper, and everything's digital now, and, you know. But people knew what was going on and who everybody was because it was a printed piece of paper that they held in their hands. So anyway, thank you very much, and I'll take that back to the EDAC.
Thanks, Mayor Welch.
Well, you actually answered my question. Thank you for that wonderful presentation, Mary Lou. I was going to ask you while we have you here if you want to make any announcements about any future events, but you're on top of it. So thank you.
You're welcome. May 22, Wednesday, 5:30 to 7:30.
My comments, my comments, Mary Lou, are for perspective for newer members to just share a little bit about some of the things that, I know you provided the 2022 look back, but the work that this committee and the city have done in partnership with businesses over the years, creating BizNexus as we did in 2018 after the chamber closed, providing a space for the small businesses to convene. I really want to thank you and Chad in particular for your work and getting that started with me to make sure that we had a space for small businesses to convene. We ran the facade grant program for a number of years to help small businesses that took over spaces that needed to personalize their space or make it accessible to people, made that grant available. And then when COVID hit, I'm very proud that the city council opted to convert the facade grant program into a financial assistance program to our small and minority-owned businesses, which we were able to leverage to match county funding and put us at the front of the line so that many of the businesses in our city that were closed or were revenue hampered by COVID were able to not just get funding from us, but also get it from the county as well. And then I think beyond that, I really want to just appreciate you at a personal level for all the work you've done with, you know, I know it was once Emeryville on the Bay, but San Francisco by the Bay. And just the work you do to promote and bring people together is a really important feature of what EDAC does. And I really think, I want to thank, as member Donahue, who served on that committee, and I know he's still assisting and helping with that. He's a great friend to the committee. But just the work you do to convene everybody and bring us forward. I've had countless opportunities. I have a couple of large business roundtables and small business roundtables I sit with. And when I talk to our local restaurants, you know, they really, they really appreciate the work that the EDAC does and feel included. So thank you so much for creating an inclusive space for everybody.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Any further comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, that will conclude item 6.3. And Madam Clerk, the time is 7:33. This meeting is adjourned. For the members of the public, we have one very brief meeting for the redevelopment agency before we go to our council meeting. And the time, Madam Clerk, is 7:33. I call to order the city of Emeryville as successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. Madam Clerk, please note that the members are all still present. This time, I'll entertain a motion to approve this agenda.
I move approval of the agenda.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion by Vice Mayor Welch, seconded by Member Cor to approve the agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Cor.
Aye.
Councilmember Mora.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch.
Aye.
And Mayor Batters.
Aye. Ex parte communications, are there any to report on the redevelopment agency? Seeing none, now is the time for public comment on non-agenda items. A member of the public who wishes to comment for an item not on this agenda has two minutes to do so. Are there any members here for the redevelopment agency? Seeing none, I see one hand raised. Please recognize Brian Donahue for two minutes.
Okay, the last speaker was talking, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Last speaker was talking about, about how we need to support the small businesses, and we need to have a chamber of commerce reconvene. Of course, left unspoken was large businesses. And the reason why that's unspoken is because, well, that's not as popular with the, with the average people, is it? No, it's not. Small businesses are what people have affinity towards, not huge corporations. But in fact, huge corporations is where all the, the Emeryville largess goes, government largess goes towards. Last time, we had a chamber of commerce that was alluded to. The woman talked about, it was a newspaper. That newspaper, if the mayor could listen, please. I feel like I'm being ignored when the mayor isn't listening. I feel like I'm being ignored. So what, we feel like we're being ignored when we speak, and you're not, you're obviously not paying attention. So that makes us feel like we're being ignored, to Mayor Batters. So the, when we had a chamber of commerce, we had, they, she made allusions or references to the newspaper that was produced. And that was done at taxpayers' expense of $35,000 a year that we gave to the chambers. And they would use that, they used that money to tell us which council members to vote for in the upcoming election. So that's an abuse of taxpayer-funded monies. You don't spend public monies telling us who to vote for. The chamber had their opportunity, Chamber of Commerce, and they blew it.
Thank you for your comment.
I'll follow your language about the Chamber of Commerce.
Are there any of the members of the public who wish to speak on the non-agenda items? Okay, seeing none, there is a consent calendar. Members, is there any discussion on the consent calendar? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion by Vice Mayor Welch, seconded by Councilmember Cor to approve items 6.1 and 6.2. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Mora.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce is absent. Vice Mayor Welch.
Aye.
And Mayor Batters.
Aye, thank you. That's approved. There are no action items. Madam Clerk, the time is 7:37. This meeting is adjourned. And Madam Clerk, I will call to order now the Emeryville City Council meeting. The time is 7:37. This meeting is called to order. I will ask that the clerk begin with the roll call, please.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Councilmember Mora.
Here.
Councilmember Pryforce is absent. Vice Mayor Welch.
Present.
And Mayor Batters.
Here. This time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the final agenda.
I move approval of the final agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion by Vice Mayor Welch, seconded by Councilmember Cor to approve agenda. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Mora.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce is absent. Vice Mayor Welch.
Aye.
And Mayor Batters.
Aye, thank you. That is approved. We are at special orders of the day. There was a gentleman from the Red Cross here earlier, but I don't see where he went. Do we know, do we have a name for somebody?
I was told that Richard Faitman would be coming.
And there was a man here who had a Red Cross badge. He was sitting next to Mr. Martin in the back there.
Oh.
And then he left like 15 minutes ago. Is he in the hallway by any chance? Can we just do a quick check so I don't, he's not waiting around for nothing?
I didn't see him. Sorry, Mayor.
Yeah, an older white man with a white jacket and a red bandage. Just give him a chance to... Maybe what we can do is, if there's no objection and unanimous consent, I'd like to take item four after the consent calendar. Is there any objection to my motion?
None.
Okay, it's so ordered, so we will continue item four until after consent. Item five is announcements of committee and commission vacancies. Madam Clerk?
Mayor, nothing new to report, just that the current recruitment is open until April.
Mayor, nothing new to report, just that the current recruitment is open until April 3, 2023, and applications available on the website.
Thank you. Item six is council members' special announcements or reports on meetings and attendance. Are there any members who wish to report on meeting they attended? Seeing none, item seven is the city manager's report.
Just a couple of quick ones, Mr. Mayor. Want to announce to the community that Coffee with a Cop will be March 14th from 8:00 AM to 9:30 AM at the Black Diamond Cafe. Welcome all community members and any of you who wish to join. I'm also having coffee with the city manager. You can get two coffees that week, March 16th. Be happy to see you. And then lastly, another reminder that the Healthy Family Festival in Agunt is Saturday, April 8th from 10:00 to 11:00 at ECCL. Thank you.
Okay, and if council members wish to attend, please make sure that you are not discussing in a quorum anything that would be a subject matter of this body. Okay, ex parte communications, are there any ex parte communications to report this evening? Member Cor.
None.
Member Welch.
No.
Member Mora. Okay, we'll recheck with Member Pryforce if he returns. I have none to report for this evening. Item nine is public comment for the consent agenda and items not on this agenda. Members of the public who wish to comment for an item not on this agenda have two minutes to do so. Are there any members here present who wish to comment for an item on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we have one hand raised. Please recognize Brian Donahue for two minutes.
Yeah, there's a question for the city manager, Paul Budenhagen. And as you know, Mr. Budenhagen, you, the Brown Act provides that you may provide short concise answers to questions, direct questions from the public at public meetings such as this, as long as you don't engage in substantive discussion. The Brown Act does provide for that. So my question to the city manager is, why has two-thirds of Emeryville's City Hall, the old City Hall, been closed to the public since we returned from the pandemic? We came back to City Hall last meeting, it was our first meeting, and we were surprised, we, the people, were surprised to see all these new signs disallowing us from our City Hall. It's the People's Hall. And we're not allowed now in the basement, garden level. We're not allowed in, on the first floor level. We're not allowed to enter the great public edifice, front steps, that are, that are all about, symbolic of democracy and our value, our democratic values. And as we ascend the stairs to a, to enter the city council chambers, to redress our government, that, those doors have been closed to the public because the whole first floor has been closed. All these places were previously open to the public and now they're closed. So since City Hall is the People's Hall, we deserve to know why our building has been closed off to us. All I've been able to find out is, yes, it has been closed off, but I have not found any reasons why, no reasons were proffered. I presume it was, the decision was made by somebody before the current city.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, any other public comment for items not on tonight's agenda? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move to the consent calendar. Items 10.1 through 10.5, are there any items that you wish to discuss, comment on, or pull for further debate? Seeing none, is there a motion on the consent calendar?
I move approval of the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Thank you. There's a motion by Vice Mayor Welch and a second by Member Cor to approve the consent calendar. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Mora.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch.
Aye.
And Mayor Bouters.
Aye, thank you. And members returning to item four on the agenda, which was our special order of the day. Richard appears to not be here, so sorry that you're not here, Richard. We're going to go ahead and do the proclamation of the City Council of the City of Emeryville proclaiming the month of March 2023 as American Red Cross Month. Whereas the American Red Cross was founded in May 1881 by Clara Barton, and this year marks the 142nd anniversary of the Red Cross. And whereas the American Red Cross is a volunteer agency chartered and authorized by Congress to act in times of need, provide compassionate assistance afflicted by personal, local, or national disasters. And whereas people have counted on the Red Cross for the information and skills they need to be safe at home, at work, at school, and at play, training people in life-saving skills in CPR, first aid, fire prevention, and water safety. And whereas with over 1,500 volunteers in Alameda County, the American Red Cross assisted or responded to 239 disaster operations in 2022, received nearly 31,000 blood donations, and 1,258 blood drives from citizens throughout Alameda County, and trained 2,975 people in aquatics and water safety. And whereas the American Red Cross installed 690 smoke alarms, trained 9,659 citizens in first aid, CPR, and AED use, and through the Pillowcase Project and Home Fires Campaign, 1,391 local individuals and families received fire prevention, training, and supplies, and responded to 583 members of the armed forces. Whereas for over 100 years, United States presidents have called on the American people to support the Red Cross and its humanitarian mission. Our community depends on the American Red Cross. And because of it's, because it is not a government agency, the Red Cross depends on the support from the public to continue its humanitarian work. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Emeryville that the month of March 2023 is hereby proclaimed as American Red Cross Month, and it is further proclaimed by the mayor and the city council of the City of Emeryville at this meeting held on Tuesday, March 7, 2023. I will give a very brief remark on this topic. Just want to appreciate the request to have this recognition in this month. I'm a former employee of the American Red Cross. I was a disaster relief director in the San Gabriel Valley chapter in Southern California for several years. I was a teacher of basic aid CPR and water safety training, as well as fire prevention to LA public schools. And it is a, mostly a volunteer-run organization. There are a handful of people who do receive salaries for their work. They partner incredibly well with law enforcement agencies in providing what we call DAT response, disaster action teams, who respond to fires in the community, other types of disasters where people are displaced or lose housing. They're also a very important resource to young people who are looking to find their way in life and find opportunities with training. They're a resource to businesses in our community for preparedness, and they help develop local response plans to make sure that people who work in our city but don't live here understand the best resources available to them in the event of the unimaginable. So I want to just give us, if Richard was here, I would give him a special thank you. But I just want to thank others who have worked for or volunteered with the American Red Cross and those who donate to the American Red Cross to fulfill its mission. Because I know from personal experience, having personally served in 13 national disasters and as one of the co-leads in disaster relief in Plaquemine Parish, Louisiana after Hurricane Katrina, how important American Red Cross services are. So to everybody who may see or be watching this, if you have served or do serve a local response team here in Alameda County or across the East Bay, I want to thank you for your service. And if you are a donor to the American Red Cross, thank you for making those services possible. Okay, we'll move from item four down to item 11, public hearings. There are none. Item 12.1 is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville amending the fiscal year budget for 2023. And I'd like to welcome Lawrence. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I'm excited to present the mid-year budget review for the current fiscal year. Okay, the budget was approved by the city council in June last year. At mid-year, department review the revenue expenditure to determine if budget adjustments are required. Next slide, please. Now we focus on the general fund. General fund is the main operating fund for the city. And general fund provides services and programs provided by police via public work, community development, and other departments within the city. Okay, next slide, please. Now we look at the general fund revenue. The pie chart showed a general fund revenue of $45 million for the current fiscal year. As you can see, sales test, business license, TOT or hotel test, license and permit are the four major revenue sources for the general fund, which account for almost 50% of the general fund revenue. Next slide, please. Okay, this table show the revenue adjustment for the current fiscal year. In addition, you also provide information on the performance of the general fund prior to the COVID-19. The first column, fiscal year 2019, shows the actual general fund revenue before the COVID-19. And tonight, we are focusing on the mid-year adjustment with a red arrow above that. I'm going to walk you through the adjustment. First of all, sales test increased slightly by around $400,000 due to improvement in overall economy. TOT or hotel tests projected to increase by $1 million as travel rebound. And you may notice that prior to the COVID-19, the TOT revenue is close to $9 million. And with the travel rebound, we are back to 5.3 million, which is like a couple million below the COVID-19. License and permit increased by 2.6 million due to more development activity, such as building permit, plumbing permit, electrical permit, and mechanic permit. Other revenue increased by $700,000 due to reimbursement on various programs. Uh, next slide, please. The pie chart showed the general fund budget expenditure of $48 million for the current fiscal year. Staffing and contract costs are the major general fund expenditure, which account for almost 80%. Next slide, please. Now we look at the general fund expenditure adjustment. Overall, the year-to-date expenditure are in light of the approved budget. Some of the adjustment include $100,000 increase in the one-time outside legal cost, $200,000 increase in insurance due to higher costs in the insurance market. Other expenditure increased by around $500,000, mainly due to increase in program activities. Uh, next slide, please. The mid-year budget adjustment also include a transfer of $1 million from the general fund to the Economic Uncertainty Reserve. And after the transfer, the fund balance for the Economic Uncertainty Reserve has a balance of $24 million, which is equal to 50% of the general fund operating expenditure. We also, we also made a small transfer of $22,000 from general fund to cover shortfall in parking programs. Next slide, please. Now we look at some of the proposed staffing changes. Community service department is requesting true staffing adjustment. The first position is to request a recreation supervisor to a recreation manager. The, the manager will oversee the adult and senior programs and child development center. Project general fund costs is around $25,000. And the second adjustment is to restore a youth service program coordinator with a general fund cost of around $110,000. And this position will generate around $40,000 in revenue to offset some of the cost. Uh, next slide, please. The staff report also include minor adjustments to revenue and expenditure in other city funds. And to, and I'm not going to read that out, you can refer to page three of the exhibit A. Those are very small dollar amount. Next slide, thank you. And staff recommended the city council approve the resolution amending the current year budget. And this concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any question that you may have.
Thank you, Lawrence. Is there any members of the public who wish to comment on item 12.1 related to the mid-cycle budget update? And we have one hand raised in the virtual public. Please recognize Brian Donahue for two minutes.
Yes, finishing up what I was just saying earlier, but also related to this item. Why is City Hall closed now to the public? Large swaths of it are closed. In the building that, that you guys are in right now, the two-thirds of it are now closed, as I, as I mentioned before. It's fine to close off the People's Hall to the people, but there's got to be a reason given. It can't just be capricious. It has to be rationality and reason. It's our hall, it's the People's Hall. We need to know why it's been closed. So the current city manager might not have been employed by the City of Emeryville. One, the decision was made to close the People's Hall to the people, or largely closed. That's fine, that being what, that what it might be the case. We still need to find out why our City Hall has been closed. And if there's no good reason, we need to have the City Hall reopened to us. So I need to have the city manager explain, or we need to have the city manager explain to the people why it's been closed. If he didn't make the decision, he needs to find out why. I did a public records request for any documents related, related to this. And all I could find is that just, indeed, it has been closed, but no reason given. But we are deserving of a reason because we own the building. And we previously had access, the two-thirds that are now closed, that we need to, the City of Emeryville needs to come clean. Why have you closed our building to us? Just give us a reason or reopen it.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public who wish to comment on the mid-cycle budget review? Okay, public comment is now closed, and we will turn to members for discussion. Are there members who have questions for Lawrence? Comments? Member Cor.
Thank you, Lawrence. I am looking at the budget, the community services, is that what I see is the $125,000? The minus, that goes towards the, the additional additions that you mentioned?
Yes. Mm-hmm.
All right, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Others with questions? Just want to thank the finance department and the staff at the city manager's office as well for their work on keeping track on the, of the budget and keeping us on path for a completion of a very challenging window of time during COVID. We've come out of it with these minor changes, and we will be engaging in the development of the next year budget cycle here in the spring. So with that, members, if there is no further discussion, we'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution associated with this budget adjustment.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
I will second.
Thank you. There's a motion by Member Mora and a second by Vice Mayor Welch to approve this resolution. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember Mora.
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch.
Aye.
And Mayor Bouters.
Aye, thank you. That motion is approved, that resolution is adopted. Thank you, Lawrence. Item 12.2 is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville appointing city council members to serve on city council committees with terms commencing immediately and ending in December of 2023 and amending the local rosters. Members, this is one of two items tonight in follow-up to the welcoming of our new council member, Councilmember Cor. So former council member Medina had two spots on committees that were vacated when she left the city council. That was the Sustainability Committee and the Transportation Committee. And we have the ability to amend any of the committees tonight with this agenda item. But those are the two vacancies that we seek to fill. And before we call for public comment, I would just like to offer and invite Councilmember Cor. Do you have committees, are these vacancies the ones you're interested in? Or do you want to discuss further other opportunities for yourself?
I am happy to fill any of the vacancies that are available in the manner that they are available. And I, I will go with whatever this council needs at this point, wherever I'm needed.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much. Okay, so we'll call for public comment. A member of the public who wishes to comment on this item has two minutes to do so. Is there any member present here who wishes to comment? Seeing none, we have one hand raised. Please recognize Brian Donahue for two minutes.
I would like to reiterate one final time that the city manager has, the Brown Act provides that the city manager may ask, may answer direct questions put to him by the, by the people at these council meetings, as long as the answers are not, quote, substantive, close quote. So he, the city manager could tell us either why the, the city hall has been closed to the people, two thirds of it. Or he could help to answer the question, just say he's not at liberty to say right now due to the complex nature of it maybe or you know, something to that effect. But what's not acceptable is to just total silence as to why our city hall, the people's hall has been closed to us whereas before it was open. So I mean, I think the city manager, I think one of the council members should rise up and just ask the city manager or just say, tell the city manager, yes, you could ask this citizen's question, answer this citizen's question, I'm sorry, in a brief and unsubstantative manner if you so choose. That, that would be nice so that we would have some transparency and accountability. I'll leave it to the council members.
Okay, are there any of the members of the public who wish to comment on item twelve point two? Okay, seeing none, public comment is now closed. We'll turn to discussion and motions. Is there any member who wishes to discuss the item? Vice Mayor Welch?
No, I think.
Like take a motion?
Yeah, I will go ahead and, and move the resi- are we doing a resolution?
There's a resolution, but it has blanks in it. So would you like to appoint her to the sustainability and transportation committee?
Yes, I moved the resolution to appoint councilmember Carr to the sustainability and the transportation committees.
Okay, thank you.
I second.
Hey, thank you. Are you amenable to those appointments? Would you love that?
I'm absolutely fine. But are you going to take some of the meetings that are coming up because I don't have the agenda? Because I think you are an alternate on some of these or both of these.
So to be clear, all we're doing in this motion is the two standing committees in the city council. So each of us sit uh, in groups of two on one of five committees. So we each have two assignments. So you would be sitting with me on the transportation committee. We have a monthly meeting. You'd be sitting with councilmember Mora on the sustainability committee. The other regional boards that have alternates and stuff, that's the next agenda item.
I see. All right.
You okay with that?
I'm fine with this.
Okay, great. So there's a motion by councilmember, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Welch and a second by councilmember Mora to appoint Sukdeep Core to the sustainability and transportation committees. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Mora?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Batters?
Aye, thank you. And we look forward to having you on those committees. Transportation meets on Thursday. All right. Um, item twelve point three is a resolution of the city council of Emeryville appointing representatives to serve on the various county, regional and statewide boards, commissions and committees for terms commencing immediately and ending in December of twenty twenty three. And for this one, I need to pull up the agenda to see the list unless, April, do you have a list you can share of all those items? The ones that are, the ones that are vacant, we could just go over and so we could make sure we fill them appropriately. For the benefit of the public, we did not do temporary appointments for a one to two month period. We just left them blank. So we don't presume that our newest council member can or do all of them. And it's also an opportunity for other members. If you would like to make a swap or make something available, we can have that discussion still tonight. It's all open. Okay, that's perfect. If we could slide that up. Okay, so the vacancies, the Alameda County Transit, Emeryville Interagency Liaison, there's the two members. That's typically, that's typically held by the two members of the transportation committee. So that would be you and I. And we meet just quarterly. So it's once a quarter. And we meet with two members of A C Transit's board to discuss transit service in the county. The Alameda County Transportation Commission, that is the, the board that I serve on as the chair for the county. And former councilmember Medina was my alternate in the event I wasn't present. So you would have the opportunity to serve on that one if you wanted to take that. Councilmember Mora is the Alameda County Waste Management Authority. His alternate was councilmember Medina, and this is a sustainability item. So that might be of interest to working with him, to you. There's an opportunity for the A Bag position, which is got one annual meeting that's like, I believe, remember Welch, you did this before. Is it, is it an all-day meeting? Yeah, it's one all-day meeting in June. Unless you wish to get really, really involved, there's a vote in June on all, all the A Bag issues. And then if we could scroll down, the Emeryville Oakland J P A is not a meeting that's happened in, I don't know, Chad told me like twenty years probably. Hasn't met in twenty years. That's essentially if the, if the East Bay Bridge Shopping Center was to be materially redeveloped, then the, this board sits as an appeals body to a planning decision on that. So we haven't ever met. So every member is either on it or an alternate. And then going down, is there anything below that? Okay, no. Is there anybody who has a position on here that they'd like to offer up as something that they'd like to make available? Member Pryforce?
The East Bay Sports Field Recreation G P A as an alternative, alternate?
Okay, so that's, that's available to everybody because it's being made available today. Anyone else?
My alternate position on the East Bay Energy.
East Bay Community Energy Board. Okay, it's a sustainability item. Anybody else?
I have a question. Could I move up to be the main member for A Bag and open up the alternate?
You could do that. So let me, let me ask, uh, member Core, what are you most interested in doing?
The sustainability did definitely interest me. So I, I can take any alternate position. The transportation, I think, goes along with sustainability. So I, I wouldn't mind doing that either. And then I'll defer to the other members on what they want to be the main member on and the alternate member on. So I, I would, I would do that. Go ahead.
I recognize member Mora.
If I could suggest related, most closely related to sustainability is the East Bay Community Energy. So I think you could have a, quite a big impact there. So I, I would recommend being Mayor Batters' alternate on that one.
I am, I'm absolutely okay with that. But if Mayor Batters wants to be the main member on that and I can be the alternate, that's fine to me too.
What I would hope to do actually is I would hope to have you join as the alternate since member Mora is giving it up and then be able to actually not be the main member and give it to you. I think we could spend some time getting you on boarded with E B C E and then I would love for you to take that over as a sustainability committee member. It'd be great for you to be the leader for us on that. Does that sound good?
I'm happy with that.
Awesome. That'd be great. So these other ones are, Vice Mayor Welch expressed an interest in the A Bag appointment. Are you interested in being her alternate to that?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. And I think the waste man, these other ones as alternates, essentially if a member can't go to the meeting, they ask if you can stand in their stead. Are you interested in the East Bay Recreation Authority? It's a, we call it the Gilman Fields J P A. Essentially, we are in a joint power authority with Albany, Berkeley and Piedmont. Is that right? Richmond as well? Yeah, so.
How often does that meet?
How often does that one meet? I want to say it's quarterly or as needed. It's quarterly to as needed. And essentially, we, we co, we, we are contributors to a set of youth playing fields that are out at Gilman and the I eighty, there's a, the Tom Bates parks are there. And we, we, it's oversight of the management and the cost of the fields and we have like a one percent interest in the fields. It's kind of silly that we're on it, but we're, we're in it. So currently, member Welch is the representative, Vice Mayor Welch is the representative to it and.
There's been no meetings. I have not been called to serve.
If the alternate position is open, I can absolutely. I mean, if we, if someone's needed there, if the warm bodies needed there, I'll be there.
Okay, all right. So let's do this. Let's call for public comment. Members of the public who wish to comment on this item have two minutes to do so. And I see nobody present here and I see no hands raised. No, we have a hand raised. So can we recognize Brian Donahue for two minutes?
Yes, I would, can you hear me?
Yes.
Sound quality is very bad. Very bad. I don't know why it's so much worse this meeting than the previous meeting. Okay, so I have an outstanding question to any council member or the, the city manager. And I can't get a que- I can't get my question answered by the city manager via telephone or email or text. So this is my only option to get an answer. Why is the people's hall now closed to the people? So I'll just use my remaining time, remaining time waiting for an answer from anybody, city council members or the city manager. Okay, the city of Emeryville doesn't want to let us know why our city hall has been closed to us. That's been made very clear just now. You don't want, we don't deserve to know why our city hall, the people's hall has been closed to us. You think that we don't deserve to know. That's been made very clear right now. Thank you anyway.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any of the members of the public who wish to comment? Okay, seeing none, public comment on this item is closed. Members, if we could put the screen back up paper, I'll make a motion to move this item along. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to appoint councilmember Sukdeep Core to the A C Transit Emeryville Interagency Liaison Committee to appoint her as the alternate to the Alameda County Transportation Commission, to appoint her as the alternate to the Alameda County Waste Management Authority, to appoint her as the alternate to the Association of Bay Area Governments, to appoint her as the alternate to the Emeryville Oakland Joint Powers Authority, and to appoint her as the alternate to the East Bay Sports Field Recreation J P A, and to appoint Vice Mayor Welch as the voting member to the Association of Bay Area Governments. That's my motion.
I second.
Thank you. There's any discussion on this motion? Hearing and seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Mora?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Batters?
Aye, thank you. And we look forward to your service on behalf of our city. Thank you so much. Members, item twelve point four is a resolution of the city council amending the regular meeting schedule of the transportation committee and amending the fiscal year twenty two, twenty three local roster of boards, commissions and committees accordingly. This item is essentially just moving the transportation committee's meetings from Thursday at nine A M to Tuesday, uh, the second Tuesday of the month at three P M to accommodate the schedules of staff and committee members. This time I'll entertain public comment. Members of the public who wish to comment on item twelve point four have two minutes to do so. There are no members present in the audience seeking public comment. I see no hands raised. Public comment is now closed and we'll turn. Is there a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I second.
Thank you. There's a motion by a member Mora, seconded by Vice Mayor Welch to approve this resolution. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Councilmember Mora?
Aye.
Councilmember Pryforce?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Welch?
Aye.
And Mayor Batters?
Aye, thank you. The motion passes. The resolution is approved. Item twelve point five is a discussion of the implementation of A B two four four nine relating to teleconference participation. Madam City Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, I wanted to give a brief presentation regarding the implementation of A B two four four nine. This is the bill that relates to teleconferencing participation by city council members. The Brown Act has a traditional teleconferencing regulations and they use the word teleconferencing to, as we use the word virtual or remotely, those, that word is used interchangeably with teleconferencing. But the Brown Act still allows members to participate remotely, subject to certain noticing requirements. And this, these were in effect before COVID. The publication of the physical address that you're going to be at goes on the agenda. Post the agenda at the location. You allow public comment and you have to ensure ADA access for the, the place that you are. This was traditionally used for, how I've seen it traditionally used is council members who were traveling on business or on vacation and they had something that they really wanted to participate in. So that is still available. What A B two four four nine does is it amends the Brown Act to authorize a different kind of teleconferencing participation by members, contingent on request and action by the legislative body. It's a complex alternative to traditional teleconferencing regulations and it has a lot of limitations on its use. It applies to all legislative and advisory body meetings. There are two different kinds of exceptions, which I'm going to explain separately. There's just cause and emergency circumstances. And this bill is only in effect until January first, twenty twenty six. So I'm going to talk about the limitations of the bill overall to, to teleconferencing. And then we'll get into the specifics of what just cause and emergency circumstances are. So in order to be able to teleconference, there has to be, the member can only participate via teleconference no more than three consecutive months and no more than twenty percent of regular meetings. For Emeryville, which has twenty one regular meetings, this would be four meetings per year. The just cause exception is capped at two meetings per year. A quorum of the body has to participate in a single physical location identified on the agenda. So it, it limits the number of members who can utilize teleconferencing at a single meeting to more than, to no more than two. And members have to participate remotely using both audio and video capabilities. So the just cause exception is defined as circumstances in caregiving of a child, parent, grandparent, grandchild or domestic partner that requires a member to participate remotely, a contagious illness that prevents the member from attending, a need related to a physical or mental disability, and travel while on business of the legislative body or another state or local agency. So what this would look like is if a member wanted to participate remotely using one of the just cause provisions, they would make a notification to the council. Staff recommends that the member notify the city manager, the city clerk or the presiding officer at the earliest possible opportunity. The action taking, taken at the meeting would be that the member has to disclose at the meeting before any action is taken whether there are any individuals eighteen years of age or older are present in the room at the remote location and the general nature of their relationship to the individual. Staff recommends that the presi- provide, presiding officer asks the virtual participant to disclose this information following roll call. And the council member must again participate through both audio and visual technology. The second exception is called emergency circumstances. And this is defined as a physical or family medical emergency that prevents a mayor from attending in person. This one's a little bit more complicated. There's more steps to take. The request has to be approved by the city council. So the staff recommends that the member notify the city manager, city clerk or the presiding officer as early as possible about their need to participate remotely. And the notification has to include a short, which is less than twenty word, description of the circumstances relating to the member's need to appear remotely. Actions taken at the meeting, the first thing is that the item is added as an urgency item by the presiding officer, city manager, city attorney at the beginning of the meeting and the action is taken following roll call. The teleconferencing member again must disclose if they have anyone that's eighteen years of age or older with them at the meeting before any action is taken and the general nature of the relationship with that individual. The presiding officer will, staff recommends the presiding officer asks the virtual participant to disclose this information following roll call. There isn't any enforcement of A B two four four nine that we're, that's going to happen from the city perspective. Members are responsible for complying with A B two four four nine. Failing to comply with it is a violation of the Brown Act and could jeopardize the validity of the meetings. So staff recommends that any member who attempts to join in excess of the number of meetings per year allowed or whose request is denied under the emergency circumstances procedures be marked as absent. These members won't be barred from joining the meeting. They can certainly still join as a member of the public. They can certainly still join as a member of the public, just not as a member of the city council. So the staff recommendation is that the city council review the provisions for teleconferencing under AB 2449 and provide direction for us to update the teleconferencing procedures in the city council rules of procedure. This will make it very clear to council and to staff exactly what needs to happen if a council member wants to participate remotely. And that's the end of my presentation.
Thank you. We'll go to public comment. A member of the public who wishes to comment on item 12.5 has two minutes to do so. Please recognize Brian Donahue for two minutes. Oh, actually, hold on. We have one person present. John, you can come up to the microphone. Go ahead.
Thank you. Does this also apply to committees on the city? Okay, it's not just, I don't see anywhere in there where it reflects the point that I was tickling in my last presentation about the feeling of responsibility that an individual has when they are deemed as at risk for self-care. And so current members of committees who may feel imperatively challenged to attend meetings in person, it seems like we are potentially denying quality representation in various committees. And I would like to ask if that would be something, there was a thing where the council can approve it, but it didn't, none of the details related to the at-risk from COVID. It covered standard pre-COVID rules. It didn't cover today's rules. And so that's almost like a blue set of rules rather than a current set of rules. So, that's my only question.
Thank you. We'll get to questions when we finish public comment. Please recognize Brian Donahue for two minutes.
Approximately in 2016, the California Legislature made a rule that the, increasing the transparency and accountability of police departments up and down the state. And specifically, they ruled that people have a right to know if their police departments are racist, for instance. They can find that out by checking the Terry Stop information that has to be tracked now by police departments up and down the state. This is what this assembly bill mandates. I forgot the number of the assembly bill. But we are now going to be able to determine whether or not, like, for instance, Emeryville Police Department is pulling people over because of their race. Now we're going to be able to get the actual data on that. It's going to be, have to be made public. And the reason why I bring this up is because it's going to be available to us, the people, this information, this data, at the end of April. And the reason why I'm bringing it up now is because to point out that the city of Emeryville waited until the last possible second to have this information be publicly available. Other cities, our neighboring cities, all other cities up and down the state beat Emeryville to the punch. Only the laggard and non-transparent and non-accountable cities joined Emeryville and waiting until the last possible minute, and that is April of 2023. So I bring this up to point this out, that this city doesn't have a good record on accountability and transparency. And then with the current item we're talking about, again, you know, we don't, you're not, we've seen how you operate, and if you don't operate with transparency and accountability.
Thank you for your comment. Any other members of the public who wish to comment on item 12.5? Okay, so first, before we answer and address the question that was raised, just as a piece of framing, couldn't agree with you more, Mr. Suter. One of the challenges, this is a state law that was passed, right? So the state law that was outlined by Amber, I'm sorry, Amber, April, related to, relating to public meetings, during COVID, we operated under a different law that they created, which was AB 361, that allowed us to, allowed us all to be remote, all to join via video conference at all of our boards and committees and commissions. And the governor set the expiration for that law through his executive order. The law was set to expire when the executive order expired, and that expired February 28th, so just a couple of weeks ago, a week ago. And so this is the new replacement law, which is kind of like a mid-step. But I would tell you that every public board I'm on, representing the city, which has had to grapple with this, doesn't like it. It's not, it's not good for a lot of different reasons. You've highlighted some of them, right? It doesn't provide adequate exceptions or protections for people. It doesn't take into account certain circumstances. I think some of the provisions, I think, are actually foolish. So requiring us to make a vote about whether a person is reasonably excused in some circumstances seems to me like it could be ripe for abuse, right? So to me, there are things about it. And most public agencies, when they saw this bill being pushed through, opposed this bill. There was a separate bill that we thought would be much better. And so I will tell you that a couple of other boards of mine are not using this law at all. We're just, we're going back in person and making meetings available to the public via hybrid, partly because it's very difficult to implement, partly because it creates a reporting and record-keeping requirement that I, my question for the staff will be, who's doing that? Who's going to keep track of all those things for us so that we comply, right? But it, but it also really doesn't take into account non-elected people who are serving in advisory committees, who have different life circumstances and different, didn't sign up to do what we're doing right here, right? So I think you've raised some really good questions. I'll ask the clerk if she wants to respond, or the city attorney would like to respond to, you know, beyond what I'm saying, essentially that there isn't much that we can do about what's not in the law. But perhaps you can provide some input on that first, and then we can go to discussion. Either of you?
I think you've summed it up well, Mayor. I don't have anything else to add. The city attorney does.
I would just add that this is the state legislature's attempt to allow some degree of teleconferencing, where it didn't provide it before, and this is what every local jurisdiction has to comply with.
Okay, Member Pryforce?
So, hi. Hey, I'm John. So, so in the conversation, going through this with our city manager, and I'm sorry, I have a hacktivist hacker background, so I always look for workarounds, yeah. So, so I believe that, and I may get in trouble, that if, if there are those committee members who can't, like, sort of make it, then you can cancel the committee meeting, and then just, and then reschedule it within the certain timeframes, and you can find out whether it's 72, or a week, or that sort of thing. So, so I think it's just communication and let everyone know, like, and if you have some folks who are like, hey, I can't make it, or it's really bad outside, or something like that, then he's like, okay, we'll just cancel it, and we just, and so that, then it still keeps in compliance with the law and that sort of thing. So, I could be wrong, but if ever I'm wrong, I'll leave it up to the experts.
Are there any members of the council who wish to discuss this matter? Member Kaur?
Yes, to John's point, and they are, I think, maybe for the council, like you said, we have a different responsibility, and we should be here. For the committees, is there an exception that can be made for, or is that something, Mr. Kennedy, the city clerk, that we could do to accommodate the committees?
Mr. City Attorney?
I'm sorry, yes.
I believe, I believe the council committees are considered legislative bodies under the state law.
So, yeah, just to be, just to be clear, the way the law is written, it says a legislative body or a subbody of the legislative body, and where the body, so the rule applies to all of us. And that is, I was trying to distinguish that it's harder for seniors who are participating in the Commission on Aging than it might be for five of us sitting up here, right, who are accountable to the public in a different way. There is not a workaround, you know, per se. What I will say is that there are legislators who have introduced a new bill this year that does intend to correct this, and it includes several things that I think are positive. One of them is to allow committees of any legislative bodies specifically to meet remotely. So that would be positive. That would allow the Commission on Aging or any other city committee to do that. Also, it would allow public agencies that are, that extend beyond the boundaries of a single jurisdiction to do the same thing. So an example being, the Alameda County Transportation Commission is made up of 14 cities, the county and two transit agencies, as you're familiar with. It would allow that type of body and its subbodies to also meet remotely because they're not a single geographic unit like a city is. So that was kind of, the goal was, you know, regional travel, addressing travel, addressing health issues, and addressing lifestyle impacts on people who don't typically get to serve equitably, mothers and fathers who have small children in particular, seniors who have, you know, mobility or transportation limitations. I think the goal with it is to modernize the Brown Act. Politically, whether it has the viability to pass, I don't know, because the governor didn't go with the bill last year that was most like this. He chose this more restrictive version. So we'll, we'll see. But I know that the League of Cities and some other groups are advocating for that legislation. So hopefully, we reach a point where we have a more modern and appropriate way of conducting public meetings. But yeah, there is not a way around it, per se. Yeah. Member Pryforce?
How long for, this is a question to Madam Clerk, how long for, in terms of public notice, for committees to be able to let people know that, that they are scheduling a meeting, and like, if they have to reschedule? Is it 72 hours, or is it one week?
It's 72 hours for a regular meeting. It's 24 hours for a special meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any other members wish to discuss or ask questions? I just have a question. Madam Clerk, is the expectation that the clerk's office would keep record of each just cause exception or emergency exception and the timing of them to not break the law?
I don't think it's a burdensome thing, Mayor. The clerk's office could definitely take it on. Hopefully, it will be used very rarely, and it's only available a few times a year to each council member. So, yes. Once we found out that the absence would take place, or I'm sorry, that the virtual participation would take place, we would let that council member know how many times they've used it, and let the presiding officer know also.
Okay, and just to clarify, I believe the slide presentation said the emergency exception needs a council approval, and not the just cause exception?
That's correct.
Okay, so the just cause criteria, who's making the determination that just cause exists?
The council member that is requesting the virtual participation is the one that makes the call between whether they are using just cause or emergency circumstances. So they submit their request as just cause, but they don't have to provide a lot of detail about it. And that's the one that can only be used twice a year.
Those 20 words that you mentioned, kind of thing. So, Mr. City Attorney, just as a, just as a backstop to our business as a public agency, in a hypothetical situation where a member, there was a list of things that were just cause, right, under the statute? If a member submits just cause request, and in writing, it is a reason that isn't defensible, arguably, by the statute, does that put their participation in the meeting and all the votes we take at risk?
Mr. Mayor, under the state law, there does need to be a general description that falls into one of the four categories for the just cause exemption to be used. So I would strongly encourage council members to be aware of those four different categories, and when they do indicate that they will be attending a meeting virtually and using the just cause exception, to make it clear that it falls within one of those four.
Correct. Yeah, so I guess, so in the event that someone argues that they are using it, and we have a public stakeholder who perhaps doesn't agree, right, what kind of, are we looking at? Is there a recourse under this law? Like, is it become a Brown Act violation? What is the issue that?
It potentially is a Brown Act violation if you're not, if a member is participating in the meeting virtually and not following one of these applicable exceptions that are authorized by state law.
Great. And I'd just recommend, remind all members that we do already have a basis to appear remotely, provided we use the existing authority under the Brown Act, which requires that you provide the clerk the location of the place you're going to be. It has to be ADA accessible. It needs to be published and noticed. You need to post it. It can't be, oh, I'm going to be in this location, you know, on Tuesday. I'm going to get there Tuesday afternoon. It has to be posted at the place you're going to be, 72 hours in advance continuously, as if it was outside city hall, right? So if you're looking to avail yourself to one of these, the best recommendation I can make is notify the staff early, so that we can ensure anybody who wishes to participate remotely is in compliance with all the legal requirements. What we don't want is to have actions we've taken be legally subject to challenge that negate our actions and require us to re-agenda those items. Okay? Any further questions or discussion on the item? All right, seeing none, we'll move to item 13, which is department head reports. Are there any this evening?
Yes, Mayor.
Yeah, hi.
Hi. Chad Smalley, Deputy Director of Community Development, on behalf of Charlie Bryant, Community Development Director. Going to give you the report. Planning Commission's most recent meeting was on Thursday, February 23rd. Chair Chaff had an excused absence, and Vice Chair Simons presided over the meeting. There's still a vacancy on the commission. There was a quorum of five commissioners present. Only one item on the agenda, and that was the General Plan Annual Progress Report. The commission heard the presentation, briefly discussed it, and voted unanimously to forward that to the city council for approval, which then gets forwarded on to the state. And that same progress report will be scheduled, is scheduled to be heard by you on March 21st. So you'll see it soon. That concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the department head report? Okay, seeing and hearing none, we'll turn to agenda item 14, future agenda item requests. Are there members who have a future agenda item request? Member Pryforce?
So, so future agenda items, one of them being the, looking at our ADA compliance when it comes to our buildings, and that being an issue that I've, that I've come across on the campaign trail, and now as a council member by members of our Emeryville community, who have shared their, their, yeah, their frustration with how their doors are not opening. And, and this is an issue that I've seen mostly with corporate, or like, corporate property managers, such as Courtyard 65th, where I'm at, as well as with HOA communities, like Watergate and Bridgewater. And so that's a, an issue that keeps popping up, and it's something that I would like for us to investigate, to see what is it that we can do to, to, to support. And I think, and that's where I'm focusing a whole lot more, is what is it that we can do to support? So, less stick and more carrot, like, what, what kind of funding that they can provide, and then we can match, that could lead to not just meeting the bare minimum of ADA compliance, but actually being a leader in a city of Emeryville, when it comes to making sure all our doors are open to everyone, and can open to everyone. And so that's something that I would like to put forward as a future agenda item.
I'd like to ask a question. Are you referring, you keep saying, are our buildings, can you, are you talking about a city, a public building?
No, I'm talking about, these are mostly, these are private buildings. These are private dwellings, which is why I, this is not something that I put forward towards the capital improvement plan, but something that would be a discussion that we can have with HOA communities and with property managers, to see what is it that we can do to support them getting these doors to open. And, yes, because the last thing I would want, because I actually just saw it on Twitter, of a city that just got sued because of, because there was funding for differently-able access, and that wasn't there. And I don't want to put us in those kind of crossfires.
Okay, so if it's not city buildings, I'm not able to support your request personally tonight, mostly because we don't, we don't have jurisdiction over the choices that HOAs make related to their, their properties and doors. If there is a complaint that a member of the public has related to whether a building is compliant with ADA, If there is a complaint that a member of the public has related to whether a building is compliant with ADA, they're welcome and encouraged to contact the planning department or the building department to do an inspection. If the building is not compliant, the city's building inspector, and I'll ask staff to confirm if I'm correct, I'm seeing heads nod, this city's building inspector would go out and actually address that directly with the homeowner or the tenancy or the HOA, depending on the relevant party. If it is, if it's a question about getting groups together, that's what council members can do in town halls. It's not really a forum to have here because we would not be wanting to take on liability for something that we have no jurisdiction over that would be a taking for us to give orders to a private property related to how they manage a property asset. We don't have the ability to do that as a public agency. Am I right, Mr. City Attorney?
I would just add, Mr. Mayor, that I believe there's a code enforcement officer that is budgeted for, and that is certainly something that they could be involved in in terms of doing the inspections and potentially indicating if there's ADA code violations on their visits, certainly.
Member Cor.
Yes, thank you, City Attorney. I had a question to that, that effect. So what does the role of this ADA compliance officer? What, does he report to FIAH, or is it something that the city can enforce?
Is your question about the code enforcement officer position? Sorry.
Sorry if I was not clear. Yes, I was wondering about this, the, the role. Is this, this city officer, is he a building code enforcement officer for the city? Or is he a code enforcement officer for, I know there, there are two ways that the ADA compliance can come into question from what I understand. One is the building code, and the other is the FIAH. Because some buildings were built, the building code didn't apply to some buildings because they were built before the ADA Compliance Act passed. And so now those buildings still have to comply with FIAH and the federal, is that Employment Housing Act? Yes.
So a couple of things. So we do have a building official on staff now, and council authorized the budget to hire a code enforcement officer. That interview process has concluded, and we're close to hiring the code enforcement officer, who would probably start in a month and a half or so. And once that person starts, if there were complaints of this nature, they could be referred to this code enforcement officer to figure out how to address them, whether it was, you know, one of the two ways you just mentioned, or something separate.
Member Mora?
Just a clarifying question. So the first thing I heard is that it's not within the city's jurisdiction to mandate that private apartment buildings or condo complexes are ADA compliant? So even if a code enforcement officer was involved?
That's not what I said.
Oh, okay.
No, they can mandate that. We cannot mandate what they, like, once the building is built and approved, because after we've approved something, right, it's got to be ADA compliant. It goes through the planning division. If it's ADA compliant and it's approved and it's built, if there are subsequent complaints about it, we cannot demand or, or ask them to change their building absent there being a complaint that finds that something in the building is in violation of ADA compliance. Is that correct, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, yes, that's correct. Okay, thanks for clarifying.
Member Pryforce?
So first, I'd make a recommendation to allow a council member to finish talking before they're interrupted. The other is, is that if we use that rationale, then some of the discussions that I had with Councilmember Mora on the campaign trail, and I believe Councilmember Cor also, we talked about EVs and EV support in many private dwellings. And I just, so, so I hear what you're saying, Mayor Botters, but I just want the public to know and my colleagues to know that I'm going to keep looking into this to see, once again, if there's a loophole or workaround that will allow us to actually do something as relates to private building. Because, because the other future agenda item that I was going to propose was how property managers, the existence of property managers who are, who aren't really adhering to some of the public safety concerns of residents. And so, so I'm trying to make clear, what is it that we can do as relates to property buildings and property? And I think that that's one of the reasons why when we are focusing on developments and future buildings being built, that we do look towards the future because the things that we don't see or the things that we don't recognize, then what we're saying is that we're, we're, we're leaving it up to the, the private entity to make those corrections or to provide that kind of service. And if they don't, then I just find it hard to, to, to accept and that we're just going to leave or abandon our residents to, to, to the whims of, of private companies and private develop. And that's the thing, is that many of them in HOA communities, they have a whole lot of heart, and they actually want changes, but they may not have the capital and the support. And so if there's an opportunity for us to support them, even if it's a grant or something, the, I think it was Steve Jobs that says weak companies rely on politics, but strong companies rely on big ideas. And so if we can actually come up with some of these big ideas to figure out how we can best serve our public and our residents, because it's their money, everything we talk about is their money at the end of the day. And so that is something that I will probably continue to investigate and look into. But I'm not going to give this up. Doors should be open in Emeryville for everyone.
Vice Mayor Welch?
I just wanted to note, when we talk about their money, HOA fees are paid by the residents. So that's their money that they pay into the HOA. The city does not have access to that money. We don't get any of those funds that they pay into their HOA. So I just wanted to make that one clarifying fact. We, I think we have to be very, very careful and specific about how we get involved with private property. As a government entity, there, the, the lines are drawn very clearly. And I just want us to all be mindful of that, that there are things that the city is legally not able to do. And so to go forth with just throwing that to the wind could get the city into a legal complication. That's all I wanted to say.
We, we actually aren't going to continue. There's no substantive debate on future agenda items. So we're, we, everyone has spoken. The request is, is there a majority support to agenda this item by a show of hands? Okay, there's not. Is there a future agenda item request that others wish to make? Member Pryforce?
Yeah, I'd like to, so a neighbor of mine at Courtyard Sixty-Fifth, I posted a video on Twitter, just was robbed at gunpoint in our mailroom. And this was a day before he went to his truck that was parked in the Courtyard Sixty-Fifth, owned and run by Essex Property Trust, that, and there were people in his truck robbing him. And so, so we mentioned it at a previous council meeting. I believe Councilmember Welsh had concerns around parcels as related to private properties or property managers. I would like to, to place on a future agenda item, what is it that we can do to mirror some other cities as relates to an issue that I find that pops up with these property managers, which is understaffing, both when it comes to full-time administrative staff and when it comes to maintenance. And so, and so from my understanding, and I would like for this to be investigated and studied and looked at, which is how many staff members are required to be on these private properties that, per units? So for example, is it one staff member per a hundred units and that sort of thing? And I believe that other cities have those ordinances, and we don't, which is the reason why some of these public safety issues come about, because they're understaffed and under-maintenanced.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
Do you, so you're asking us to review this through a public safety lens?
No, I'm asking us to review it in terms of what is required, because this is not just the, the public safety, it's this overall quality of life. I asked us to look at what are the ordinances or laws that are in place in other cities that we could adopt in Emeryville that will require the property managers to have staffing that is appropriate depending on their size.
The size of the building, you mean?
Yes, the size of the building.
Members, any questions for the request? Okay, by, you have a question or comment? Vice Mayor Welch?
Which cities did you say have ordinances that require a certain number or a certain ratio of property managers to tenants or units or size?
I could be wrong, but I believe Oakland does. And I would like to, for us to take a look at whether Oakland actually does have that or in other cities have them. As well as I, I was informed that there were, are actually certain requirements that need to happen, even from a, a code enforcement standpoint, that of, because we haven't had someone who, we haven't had a court enforcement officer to take a look at that. But I'd like us, I'd like for us to take a, a look at, look at it. Because I could be completely wrong, but it is, like I said, it is their dollars. And, and so I would like for us to take a look at these things to see if there's any alleviation of some of the issues that they're facing. Yeah, and I think it's, it's a good model for us moving forward, especially as we're increasing in size in our city, that it doesn't make sense for us to use the term affordable housing, and then we leave these homes to, to rot, literally, where residents have concerns that their landlords aren't maintaining their, their, their buildings. And so, and, you know, I think we should set a new standard in how we communicate with these property managers and how we deal with these property managers to ensure that residents, whether they be luxury housing or whether they be affordable housing, that their quality of life doesn't, isn't affected by the performance of the landlords in a way that we're not making them accountable.
I have a follow-up question.
Yes, you may. Go ahead.
Councilmember Pryforce, specifically for your building, Essex, they own properties in Oakland. Have you asked them personally, do they have any ordinances that they have to adhere to in Oakland around staffing and property maintenance?
Yes, I have, and, and I did not get an answer.
Okay, can I, I'd like to propose, do you have a comment? I'd like to propose a course of action on this. I'm supportive of your request as a, with an interim step, which is, could we ask that staff connect with Member Pryforce on his request? Because I don't, he hasn't produced an ordinance that tells us that this exists, but he, he said he's sure, but he's not sure. I think if we could ask for a staff memo on the status of the law in neighboring jurisdictions, and once you have that memo that we can send to all council members, then we could very, I think, we could assist with his future agenda item request at a future meeting where that memo has been shared with everybody. And then it allows us to narrow what it is the, the issue is that we could discuss. Is that fair?
Sure, that's fine.
Okay, do you accept that as a, as a, as a way of getting this forward?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Is everybody, please, by the show of hands, is everyone in favor of that suggestion?
Aye.
Okay, that's a future agenda item request with direction to staff. Are there other future agenda item requests? Okay, I have, I have a couple small things which are requests. There is state legislation. I don't want to take it for granted because we have a new council, and we have adopted, you know, standing policies when we have towns in public affairs here. But there is Assembly Bill sixteen ninety, which is supportive of the California Single-Payer Healthcare Act, Medicare for All, which I have previously brought to the council each year that that bill is run and asked for us to support with a resolution. And is there, by a show of hands, can we have a vote on adopting a resolution in support of that bill at a future meeting? Is there anyone opposed to adopting Medicare for All support? You have a question? Nope, sorry, everyone hands them. Everyone's here, I was like, oh, lots of questions. Everyone's okay with having a discussion on that?
Yes, that's completely.
All right, so we'll ask just staff there. The city of Oakland has done a resolution on this already, and I can give it to you, and we can just have a discussion about whether we want to support the bill. And then, I think there was one other, maybe that was it. That was it, okay. Anyone else? Okay, with that, the time is eight fifty-four. Madam Clerk, this meeting is adjourned. You all have a lovely evening, lovely evening.